I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Emeryville City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, April 22. It looks like we are all here at the dais, and so now is the time for public comments. Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 3.1, Housing Element Update Study Session.
So I would like to introduce Kim Obstfeld from PMC Consulting, who is assisting us with the Housing Element update. She will make the presentation. We also have Diana Kena from Planning and Building, and Catherine Furpo from Economic Development and Housing, both of whom are also working on the Housing Element, who are here and can respond to questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council members. Thank you for having me here this evening. Just a quick overview of my presentation for the evening. Just going to talk over what the Housing Element is and does, a little bit about the update process, talk through some demographic trends in the city, a little bit about housing characteristics and market trends, talk through some of the accomplishments from the city's current Housing Element, which covers the 2007 to 2014 planning period, talk through some goal and policy and program considerations for the new planning period, touch on next steps, and then open it up for your questions and comments. Oh, okay. Housing Element requirements. The Housing Element is one of the seven mandatory components of a city's general plan. Were required by the state, there's a fat stack of statutes that tell us what we need to look at, including existing and projected housing needs for all economic segments of the community, as well as those with special housing needs. It's the one and only component of the general plan that is subject to review and certification by the state of California. So we'll go through a review process with HCD. They'll be provided the opportunity to offer comments and verify that our element is in keeping with statutory requirements. Having a certified Housing Element is essential. It protects the city legally and also ensures it's a prerequisite for eligibility for a lot of grant funding. So important that we maintain that certification. The Emeryville Housing Element is a part of the general plan. Excuse me, I skipped one. This thing always gives me trouble. A quick overview of new statutory requirements for this planning period. It's pretty light this round. During the 2007 to 2014 update period, we had sort of this onslaught of new legislation. There were a lot of big changes, a lot of it having to do with how we accounted for land and how we looked at the regional housing needs allocation, which I'll touch on briefly here. But the Housing Element is already in compliance with all of those key pieces, so the state is really considering this more of a technical update. However, we do need to take into consideration a couple of new things. The first is SB 812, which requires us to take a look at the special housing needs of persons with developmental disabilities. We'll need to quantify that number and then take a look at those needs into the new planning period. SB 375 actually relates to the timing of the Housing Element update. It changes the Housing Element, provided that we get a certified Housing Element on time. It changes the planning cycle from what was a five-year update cycle to an eight-year update cycle. And it puts us on, ideally, for most jurisdictions, within metropolitan planning areas, it puts us on the same planning cycle as the regional plan. So we'll be following the efforts of the Plan Bay Area and the One Bay Area efforts. This period also, we're offered a streamlined review from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Last cycle, because there was so much legislation, it was a fairly ugly review process. Oftentimes jurisdictions would go through HCD several times to even get a statement of conditional compliance and then come back around again for certification. Recognizing that this is more of a technical update, HCD has put together some guidelines for how we can just make sure that we're eligible to begin with. There's sort of a brief checklist of which we've already met, and then they'll make our review a lot easier. And from my experience, it's been a much smoother process with the state, allowing us to focus on things that are important to the city rather than focusing on statutory requirements. The Emeryville Housing Element is part of the Emeryville General Plan, which was adopted in 2009. Again, because of all those statutory requirements and because of HCD's review cycle and schedule, it does sort of live as a separate document and was adopted and certified in 2010. So we're dealing again with a fairly recent document here. Staff has completed annual implementation reports and circulated those, making everyone aware of steps taken to achieve the Housing Element goals. Oh, gosh. This thing. Quick overview of the update process. We are working now and have been working to update data and review the existing Housing Element. We're working now and are very close to completing a draft Housing Element. And we'll then take that draft Housing Element around for the Housing Committee, Planning Commission, and Council, get last changes, buy-in and approval, submit that to HCD for their initial review. Once we've got conditional compliance, we'll come back around for adoption hearings and then achieve a certified Housing Element. Throughout this process, we're looking for input from the community. We've held a community workshop. We did a roundtable session with specific housing-related service providers and nonprofit housing organizations. We've also got an online survey up on the city's website. A quick, again, overview of the schedule. We've sort of touched on this, but we anticipate having a full public review draft about a month from now, by May 21. We'll then go to Housing Committee to review that draft on June 4, and back to Planning Commission at the end of June, and back here on July 15. Assuming everything's in order, we'll then submit to HCD for review, and that can take up to 60 days from July to September. Again, on community input, we've tried to make information as public as possible using a webpage, inviting folks into a community workshop, and we're really hoping more people will continue to contribute to that online survey. And here is the, geez. Here's the website. It's emeryville.org/housingelement. And again, that online survey is linked directly from that page. Man, this thing just does not like me. One key component of the Housing Element, one of the statutory requirements, is the regional housing needs allocation. This is a number that is handed down by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They take a look at employment trends, projection trends, birth and death rates, overall population figures, and then come up with an allocation and hand that down to metropolitan planning organizations who in turn take a look at regional trends and hand that number down to cities and counties throughout their area. So we're working with the Association of Bay Area Governments. They were handed down an allocation of over 187,000 units. They in turn allocated 1,498 units to the city of Emeryville. And again, this is for the, the regional housing needs allocation period runs a little bit different than the planning period, so we're actually looking at 2014 to 2022, just to make things a little bit extra confusing. This is a slight increase from our 2007 to 2014 RENA, which was 1,137 units. The methodology took, it was under fire for quite a while, but a lot of it had to do with priority development areas. So they tried to allocate in keeping with regional planning efforts. So taking a look at what they did for Plan Bay Area, and so a lot of the cities that are already home to a lot of jobs and fairly dense ended up getting larger allocations than those that are out in more rural areas that weren't envisioned for higher population growth. Okay, I want to talk through some, oh my gosh. Talk through some demographic trends. Please forgive me as I continue to fumble with this. Population growth. Population has been increasing rapidly for the past 40 years in the city. We saw an increase of approximately 46% from 2000 to 2010. ABAG, as part of their regional planning effort, did projections in 2013 that looked at population through 2040. They project another 34% increase from 2010 to 2020, and a total population of 21,000 by 2040. As of 2010, the census estimated a population of 10,080, and as of 2013, that was up at around 10,269. Just for comparison purposes, in terms of the rate of growth, again, we were at 46% from 2000 to 2010 for that same period. Alameda County as a whole grew by approximately 5%. Berkeley by 10%, and Oakland actually had a population decrease of about 2%. Population age. The median age in Emeryville has held pretty steady from 2000 to 2010 at about 35. This is pretty much the same as the state of California statewide median and just a bit lower than the Alameda County median of 36.6. While the population grew significantly, the age composition was actually relatively stable from 2000 to 2010. The largest percentage change was in the population aged 25 to 34. In 2000, this group made up about 22% of the population, and in 2010, they accounted for about 29% of the population. The elderly population, those aged 65 and older, remained relatively stable at about 10% of the population. You know, one point of note in the age composition is the relatively small population of children, and young adults, those aged 19 and under, which was about, at about 12% in Emeryville in 2010. Taking a look at other nearby jurisdictions in Berkeley, Albany, Oakland, and the county as a whole, young people aged under 19 made up 21% to 26% of the population, which of course is quite a bit higher than the 12% in Emeryville. Brief, oh, gosh. A brief look at housing types and housing characteristics. The Emeryville housing stock increased by about 56% from 2000 to 2010, from 4,200 units to 6,541. The majority of the units added were in multifamily structures of five units or more. That was about 78% of the units added were in those larger multifamily structures. As of 2010, the majority of the Emeryville housing stock is in multifamily units, about 87%. And again, for comparison purposes, in Berkeley, the housing stock is about 53% multifamily, and in Oakland, it's about 52% multifamily. Taking a look at housing types by the number of bedrooms, slightly over half of all housing units in Emeryville are one-bedroom, and another 13% are studios. Only about 5% of the housing stock has three or four bedrooms. In recent development projects, just taking a quick look, Ambassador Bakery, which were both completed in 2013, offered a range of bedroom types, but still, again, Ambassador, about 17 one-bedroom units and four-studio, but they did offer 25 three-bedrooms and 23 two-bedroom units, again, targeting more of a family population. Bakery Lofts had a little bit more of a mix, but fewer units on the whole. 64th and Christie, which is under construction, was weighted heavily on the one-bedroom and studio side, but will offer five three-bedroom units. And Parkside, again, weighted heavily on the one-bedrooms, but will offer some two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and live-work units for a little bit more variety. In keeping with the data that we discussed regarding household sizes and unit sizes, it's not surprising that about 50% of homes are occupied by one person. However, while the number of homes occupied by one person is up, the percentage is actually down. It was at 55% in 2000, and again, it's 50% in 2010. The number and percentage of two- and three-person households increased slightly since 2000. Emeryville has more renters than homeowners. As of 2010, approximately 65% of housing units were renter-occupied. The homeownership rate did decrease slightly from 2000 to 2010. This could be due to the addition of rental units to the housing inventory as well as continued fallout from the housing crisis and recession. It was common throughout the Bay Area, has been common throughout the Bay Area, to see a slight dip in those numbers from 2000 to 2010 just as a result of the larger housing situation. As you can see, there's a greater balance between homeowners and renters when you look at Alameda County as a whole. As of 2010, there was a 53% owner occupancy. Quick look at home prices. Median home prices have just jumped throughout the Bay Area from 2012 to 2013 and have continued to increase into 2014. In the city of Emeryville, the median home price increased nearly 50%. There were similar increases in Oakland at 49%. For Alameda County as a whole, prices went up 33%. The lower prices, Emeryville tends to have a lower median across the board, slightly attributable to the higher volume of condo sales, where some of that value is included in community amenities that are paid for through an HOA fee. Also, smaller unit sizes contribute to a lower median. We did a rent survey in 2013, and calling around to some of the larger apartment complexes available in the city, we found an average rent of 1,804 per month for a studio and up to 3,427 a month for a three-bedroom home. As of the fourth quarter of 2013, studies showed that the multifamily vacancy rate in the East Bay, and this is the East Bay as a whole, unfortunately not specific to Emeryville, but it is a good indicator. The vacancy rate in multifamily units was 3.8%. A healthy housing market is typically at around 6%, where there's a little bit of room for movement. Folks can kind of get in the door. Of course, the lack of inventory and the low vacancy rate ends up driving up prices. I do want to talk through some accomplishments from the 2007 to 2014 Housing Element. It's important to take a look at what is working for the city, what progress we did make in implementing or achieving those goals, and what programs are still relevant for us going into the new planning period. And again, these are just the highlights. The Housing Element will include a comprehensive review, program by program, of what got done and whether or not the program is still appropriate and feasible for the new planning period. The city offered funding for 19 residential rehabilitation projects, of which eight were accessibility grants. Two were weatherization grants under the Housing Rehabilitation Program. The city offered 44 first-time homebuyer loans, amounting to approximately $1.5 million. Two below-market-rate units were sold to Emory Unified School District teachers. There were eight new live-work units approved in the Parkside Development, which is under construction. Five extremely-low-income units were added at the Magnolia Terrace Development. The Ambassador Family Housing Project was completed, which offers family units for 69 lower-income households. The city issued an RFP and went through a selection process to choose EAH to develop 3706 San Pablo, which will include approximately 86 affordable family units. Under the Affordable Housing Set Aside Ordinance, units were, will be required, below-market-rate units will be required, 29 in the 64th and Christie Development and 21 in the Parkside Development. The city completed zoning for emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing in keeping with state law SB 2. The city completed an affordable housing research report, and with those findings, has embarked on completing updates to the design guidelines for family-friendly housing, which is in progress. The city assisted with the procurement of a $5 million Brownfield Grant for 64th and Christie and a $200,000 cleanup grant for 3706 San Pablo Avenue. And I want to talk a little bit about housing plan considerations for the new planning period. Again, that's 2015 to 2023, so we do have a slightly longer planning period ahead of us. These initial considerations were vetted with the Housing Committee at our last meeting, and a couple, one was added based on the roundtable discussion that we had with service providers on April 10. We did talk a little bit about the structure of the Goals and Policies section and some wording changes to existing goals. The biggest piece of that discussion was the potential to add a new goal. That goal would be to improve the balance in housing tenure, unit types, and unit sizes to specifically get at this issue of family-friendly housing and ownership housing in the city. Additional potential program topics included the family-friendly design guidelines, which are in the works, and just depending on where that runs, looking at a program language that would either enforce the, and implement those guidelines, or ensure that the city adopts those guidelines. We talked about a housing impact fee, which is working its way up to you and is in the stages of adoption. Again, depending where that is with the Housing Element process, perhaps the language is to adopt that, and if it's already been adopted, taking a look at some initial policy direction on how to use those funds. We talked about universal design elements. Currently, the city includes a density bonus for the inclusion of universal design components in new housing development. For those of you who aren't familiar, universal design is a concept in which homes are developed at the start to be appropriate for people at all stages of their lives. So for families, as well as people who are intent to retire, they also tend to be good for folks with disabilities. It's thinking about wider door frames and turn radiuses and reinforcing bathroom stall walls so that a handle can be added down the road. So taking a look at the possibility of requiring that a certain percentage of those units, of new units incorporate those features rather than making them an optional item for developers. Again, we do need to take a look at special needs housing, and universal design could be a piece of that. Also, taking a look at sites that may be appropriate for future special needs housing projects. Again, with developmental disabilities, this time, we're looking at a need for up to 32 new housing units that are appropriate for those folks, and those tend to be on sites that are transit-oriented and close to services and amenities. A few more to talk through. We talked about regulatory incentives to encourage affordable housing, including no-cost pre-application consultations and a no-cost study session, as well as no-cost expedited permit processing for projects that include affordable units. The Mortgage Credit Certificate Program is a great option. It's actually already available through Alameda County. They administer the program on behalf of the city, thinking about ways to promote that and take better advantage of its availability. A program for HOA education and assistance, and this is basically a technical assistance program for staff to encourage larger-scale ownership properties to maintain their FHA approval so that folks who do want to buy into them have a wide opportunity or wide range of opportunities for financing. Also, continuing to support state and regional affordable housing sources. There's been an ongoing push since the loss of redevelopment to create a permanent source for affordable housing funding. There's been some efforts on a regional level as well, so continuing to assist however we can. Lastly, the priority development area. So again, in keeping with the regional planning concepts, thinking about how we can take best advantage of the fact that a large portion of the city already is a PDA. There is some specific affordable housing funding available for PDAs as well as planning grants available. And to conclude, just a reminder of next steps. Again, we'll have a public review draft available at the end of May. We'll go to Housing Committee on June 4. We'll go to Planning Commission on June 26, and back to you with a full draft on July 15. And with that, I will wrap it up and open it up for your comments and questions. Thank you.
Jack, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Nora.
On your housing characteristics, this keeps popping up year after year. There's a very thin segment for mobile homes. And my understanding is, and check me on this, Ken, if I'm wrong, but the last mobile home that was in Emeryville was on the Site B. So let's go back and see if there really is a mobile home. I don't think there's any kind of permits out there for mobile homes. Charlie?
No. I think under state law, we're required to have zoning that allows mobile homes, and so we do have that. I think, I heard that perhaps the, not the Census Bureau, but somebody counts the boats in the marina, the live-boards, as mobile homes.
Well, let's clarify that.
I think that may be where it's coming from.
Because we don't have a standard mobile home, to my knowledge. And we might as well have accurate information here.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I have comments, but should we? I don't have any specific questions. Yeah, after the public comments.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public? On this?
Just a couple of comments. I did record the ABAG General Assembly meeting, and they had a couple of presentations about affordable housing that I think you would find very interesting. And then the other thing, you know, it's not about how many bedrooms you build. It's making them affordable. If you make three- and four-bedroom units, if you don't make them affordable, then you're not accomplishing the goal of getting families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, then back to council.
Okay. So I assume we're able to comment now, and this can be incorporated in your next draft, if that's the direction. Okay. So I really appreciate the additional goals that you mentioned and highlighting the three different items that need some balance. It's shocking, actually, to me to see how many more studios and one-bedrooms we've continued to approve before, at least I was on council in 2009. And I do think that it's important for us to find a better balance. And I actually, so there's three things you mentioned. It was tenure, owner occupancy, ownership housing versus rental unit type, which I think is a little bit separate from unit size but is definitely related in terms of family-friendly housing, which I think may be what's implied there, but I would state that directly. And then unit size. And I wonder if the rest of the council feels that it may be warranted to have three separate goals. I find that those are not the same thing, and lumping them all into one goal, you know, may serve the purposes, but I just wondered if we wanted to spell them out and articulate them separately. That was one thought I had. I also appreciate the inclusion of universal design. I know Ruth has brought this up in the past, and I think it's really important, and appreciate that. And then lastly, I don't know if this is the right place for it, if it goes somewhere else in design guidelines or something else, but I would like to encourage future housing designed in Emeryville to allow units to touch the ground or have direct access, not just podium after podium after podium. I know there's a real benefit to having parking underneath, but if there can be units that are on the ground or residents have that direct access. I know that we have examples in town where there are stoops that are never used. That's a design problem. I don't think that it has to be that way, and so I just wanted to emphasize that again.
I just had a quick comment on the rents. Would it be possible to kind of show what the rent's been doing in town for the past three or four years? Because, you know, I find it hard to believe that it's $2,800 for a one-bedroom or two-bedroom, one bath.
Yeah.
But it seems like they're really peaking, and so that's a concern. I would like just to see what type of percentages we've had for the past, we'll say, three years to kind of get a feel for what the future might bring us.
Okay, great. Yeah, we'll do, get the best information we can on that.
Okay.
Ruth, did you have comments?
Yeah, the Housing Committee spent some amount of time discussing exterior design, not just universal design on the inside. And it was noted that many of the flat-roofed housing seems to have leakage problems. And so there was some discussion about bringing back gabled roofs, eaves, recessed windows, and other things that might actually be more aesthetic as well as stand up to the elements a little bit better. So I wanted, that was captured very briefly in the written report on page 7 of 9. I just wanted to highlight that. Though, I did have a question. I know, you know, we give some lip service to SB 812, but what I wanted to know is if we've... we've, on page, let's see, two of nine, it says that that bill requires that we quantify the numbers of people with developmental disabilities in the community, and I was wondering if we had an estimate, either from the Regional Center or for some other source.
Yes, we have an estimate from the Regional Center that there is an existing population of 94 persons with developmental disabilities in the community. I want to say 65 or 68% of those are of the age where they're living on their own. So, you know, typically, the younger kids who are under 18 or even under age 21 typically are under the care of their parents, they're taken care of through the school system, depending on the severity of their medical needs, but 68% of our population is of the age where they could be living on their own. They also gave us a target or assumed or stated for planning purposes that we should assume that the city will need an additional 32 units for persons with developmental disabilities in the community by the end of the planning period, by 2023.
I have a question about the goals. I was I was glad to see many of these, but I had a question. Number three and number five, it says, number three is promote development of affordable housing for persons with special needs, and then number five said maintain and expand activities designed to prevent those currently housed from becoming homeless and to assist those who are homeless. And it notes merge this goal with number three. Will we still have explicit mention of homelessness, or is that being categorized under special needs?
No, no, no. We still intend to fully include that and include a policy language, as well as programs leading up to it, but just in looking at the existing structure of the housing program, it was kind of a standalone goal with very few policies and programs kind of feeding it and as implementation items, so just as more of a cleanup item, we felt it might be more appropriate to include it within that goal kind of umbrella.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Jennifer?
I have another comment, which is, I remember actually a comment that Ruth made about the high percentage of single occupancy households that we have, and looking at the housing stock, it's just no surprise. I know you did. It's just no surprise. If you have studios and one-bedrooms at 64%, is that what it actually said?
Yeah.
Then it's, you know, 50% is single occupancy household, no kidding, right? So we built a town for single occupancy households, it looks like. And then finally, about the ownership rental percentages, do you have that broken down by the single-family homes ownership rental and the multifamily units that are ownership rental? I'm just curious, because we have a very small stock of single-family homes, and I have a sense that a lot of those are rented or have landlords who don't live in town, but I'm just curious if you have any statistics around that. It does impact, I think, the ability of families to buy a home and move into town, and then also just the the presence, I guess, in of folks.
Yeah, I do not have that information. Catherine, is that something that you've got?
It may be something.
You got to talk into the mic, Catherine.
And then with multifamily, obviously, if it's ownership, it's a condo versus an apartment, and so understanding that that split.
Right, so we are actually limited by what we get from the Census to figure that out, and I did not see anything in the Census. Sorry, I didn't see anything in the Census that would talk about number of occupants by housing type, which is what you're looking for. So I will look.
Or tenure, tenure of occupants, right?
Tenure of, oh, that's right, tenure of, I don't have that. But I will look further.
Sure, thanks.
One last comment that I have. I too was shocked when I looked at the pie charts and saw 64%, but I think the other thing to keep in mind is, keep in mind is that we only have 12% of our population is youth right now, compared with the rest of Alameda County being around 21%. And so in order to make sure that we keep families, because actually, we'll have families move here with very young children, but eventually, they end up outgrowing that space, and they may even desperately want to stay in Emeryville. I know my daughter's class right now, she's in third grade, and in that class of 23 students right now, there are three that she started kindergarten with, and they, three of them are commuting from Richmond every day to continue to try to stay at Anna Yates', and it's because their families can't find affordable housing in the city, and that is not an uncommon story. So it's something that I I know the rest of the council is concerned about and that we need to keep an eye on, but thank you.
And if I recall, the RENA numbers that you mentioned, 50% of those units to add are in the affordable housing categories. 50%.
Yeah.
And how we create 700 in some units, I mean, it's a small number because we're a small town, and yet it's a significant addition to our population, and I think, you know, the public comment about the need to provide affordable units is is really important, and we need to keep that in mind.
I also want to just relay for the public record that the Housing Committee also spent some time talking about the Homeowner Association CCNR issues, and I know that at least in one condominium complex, the high rate of renter occupied as opposed to owner occupied is leading them to think about a change in their CCNRs, so that if you buy a unit, you have to live in it for at least five years. And we might want to encourage something in in our policies here as it relates to tenure, and just a statement of encouragement to consider ways that condos aren't just investment properties.
That's a good point, Ruth. Yeah. Anyone else from council? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone. All right. This meeting is now adjourned.